Okay, the next application we're getting is Z zero three thirteen, one thirty-eight, one forty-two, Third Street.
So?
Before you sit down, can I ask you a question about the square? The testimony and evidence will be the two votes taken on the other side.
Good.
Anthony Garcia.
Anthony Garcia, twenty-fourth Avenue East.
Can you just state your names by your name?
South Park, three zero seven, North Street.
Any questions I have on that? Construction LLC. This site is a third storey interior contract property now listed for for some of the old time running, if I remember that this is the old site of the old Eliza Construction. Lumberyard is a plus than every year, so it's supply building product. Mostly concerned with the course with probably most of the suburbs around us, but for a time. I know that everything I had to ask in the wise of structure would go up on the load. All those bricks and whatever, plywood. It's a very peculiar block shape. Front of my service meeting, South Park. We see at the beginning of this application that we have tried to configure along the way so that we would maintain residential uses along South Park. And we're going to use that we're proposing on third. Um, that I would like to have my first witnesses. Mr. Garcia. Now, the university who are doing preschool, uh, kind of having also that construction LLC as our.
Yes.
And the LLC is the owner of the site which is located on the corner of the A one four two Third Street. Three oh two, two four South Park.
Yes.
Uh, this is a big lot.
Yes.
And as I stated through the board, it was the site of the Eliza Lumberyard and Construction Park.
Yes.
Um, now, the lot that I stated is the way of the shade. We have a hundred thirty feet of time on Third Street, seventy-five feet of time on South Park. And measured from Third Street back, it's seven hundred thirty-four feet, correct?
Yes.
And the rear is dropped on the back of the front of the side.
Yes.
Now, your proposals to subdivide this tract into five lots, correct?
Yes.
Now, three of the lots that you're proposing would be three residential lots on South Park Street.
Yes.
And these three lots, each having a mansion of twenty-five, five hundred feet, is that correct?
Yes.
You're proposing to give two-story, two-story residential lots.
Yes.
Uh, proposing all street parking with four vehicles for each construction.
Yes.
And in terms of the interior development, each of the residences would have two three-story apartments. Correct?
Yes.
Now, uh, all the lots that the boards are conforming.
Yes.
And we're also proposing by spacing between all structures, including the lot site structure. So it's a divided apartment structure.
Yes.
And with regards to the remaining lots, essentially upon fronts upon Third Street, you're proposing commercial development of this site, correct?
Yes.
Um, the tract that we stand back on Third Street would be, um, going to two lots, is that correct?
Yes.
The first lot, right on the body of Third Street, would be for the direction of a single-story commercial structure.
Yes.
Uh, proposing a structure out of twelve thousand four hundred fourteen interior spaces, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, the rear lot that we're proposing, that would be accessed by a permanent easement. Of course, we've got a lot of money on Third Street.
Yes.
And for the time being, you're proposing that that would remain as open space.
Yes.
Central grass area.
Yeah, remaining as a grass area.
Uh, and you may consider developing that in the future. I do understand that you do so to have a comfortable, more traditional purpose, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, let's talk about the structure that's being proposed for the lot, correct, with one on the third street. Um, as I stated, as a single-story building.
Yes.
Now, what type, you have any evidence for that site at present, Ron?
Uh, hopefully, one is possibly a subway or a grocery store.
You have not signed any leases yet for that particular structure, correct?
No.
But you're really focusing on trying to get a grocery store in that location?
Yes.
Now, if you want the site itself, you're proposing to also park space.
Yes.
Two of those parking spaces would be in the map parking.
Yes.
That structure would be maybe had accessible, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, all of the traffic that would be entering into the site would be entering in off of.
Yes.
Um, there was some discussion in the planners report or consultants as to, um, truck traffic entering the site and pedestrians from trucks. Was that considered to be area of the allocation?
Yes.
And in fact, uh, certain parking spaces were removed so that trucks could access from Third Street. Turn to the left as they enter and then back out along the, um, driveway that leads to all the site's structure, is that correct?
Yes, there was, uh, some more spots, nine of them. So if we were to get that turned, it would be a little easier.
And that would probably be an inside structure.
Yes.
And then, unloading the truck would be on a pre-coding bed and rear properties, is that correct?
Yes.
There was also, also some discussion in the planners report with regard to areas for renovation and recycling. Do we show the other plans in the pre-coding bed and will be area for renovation of the site, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, now, there was also comments in the planners report that you would have to provide in the first of the site. What's estimated, all along the Third Street and the South Park Street, uh, front of this, correct?
I would agree with the requirement.
Now, you're here before this board this evening for the legislative session.
Yes.
And to understand that, and according to the planners report, you will have to provide some additional information with regards to the site, including additional landscaping, uh, smaller dimension. And it was noted there is some tax complaint, uh, light and plain bills are not fully addressed. Should the board approve this application to the final site?
I suppose so.
And if the board approve this application, uh, when would you make this start of the construction?
Soon as possible.
Would you start with the residential properties on South Park?
Uh, no, it's all the perfect piece of furniture. Uh, we'd go over the area, okay, there is a retail.
Sorry.
There's a retail, but area of parking. I understand the whole city, there is really no parking required, provided parking, which is very keen for people.
Sorry.
It's very keen.
Open for again. Every other side was going out the window.
Oh, I apologize. Um, we would start with the commercial project, uh, running on Third Street. Um, and you would ask the area that is to be developed as soon as possible.
Anything further, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner, is there any questions with this witness? I have a question, I have someone.
Well, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I think it was time.
Commissioner, help me.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. The rear lot, by the, you say at this point you think that you're not going to develop, you're just going to leave it on the rest area. At this time, we do not have an idea for it. Um, it is very large, buts up to the turnpike. Um, and we didn't want to, we lost enough time sitting trying to come up with something that would improve the area. We didn't come up with anything. Um, and we were holding up the project in front, which is, you know, three years' job, helps out the area. So we just decided to subdivide it and do it as a phase two, uh, for future development.
Okay, in the future development, are you going to today make prior arrangements for utilities?
Yes. So.
It may discuss, I, I, we don't have, but it was discussed early on.
So today you're going to run utilities through the lothead in front. So you will never have to come back and disturb your active rental, whatever, or.
That's exactly why I always thought that, uh, that the architect, um, that's something that we know we're going to have to spend the money on. On the super water, but, uh.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Commissioner, can I?
Mr. Garcia, uh, mostly, uh, actually all the, uh, different departments have actually recommended the application, which is actually a little bit something like we approve on a laundry that's going to be built on Elizabeth Avenue. I do have a couple of comments, I don't know if you can answer that, or if you want to leave it to your architect. And is that a handicap parking must be compliant with the ratio of the spaces? Can you answer that, if you want your architect to answer that?
Perhaps you can allow this on there to address that.
Okay. And there is something really bonding the storage of, uh, your heart. I think it has to do with the garbage, the architect, you go over there.
Yeah, I think Mr. Garcia explained that there is a pan in the back, the plant. Um, there is a concrete pan in the back where there would be officials or customers or garbage or recycling.
Yeah, I see that the health department has no intention of providing E D K A commercial usage, I can, uh, the health department code that is compliant with the health department codes. Uh, for the, I mean.
Can I just say that we'd like to hold.
Uh, sorry, next.
Any other questions with this witness? Any other witnesses? Yes, perhaps I can find Mr. Garcia's witness. Fifty-five, and two.
Did you refer to the site in any mention, exactly, please?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
And would you describe the site, please?
The site, Mr. Garcia, the larger tank of the site, we're planning on Third. If you face this site from Third, there's kind of a lot to depend on, so the application proposes cutting off that seventy-five by hundred-foot, um, piece of land that's on the right. It goes out to South Park Street and then subdivide that piece into three twenty-five-foot lots and construct a three new two-family homes. The principal lot, then, is just hundred thirty feet wide and the surface is five hundred fifty. And so, what's, is structure, there is. And I have a couple of comments. And the survey that we're doing for the LLC, um, shows the remaining seven blocks of the three lots. Page, the tanker on the roof, sheet two oh five, shows the five lots. The lot A, front lot, I'll talk about that in a new building model. And X shows two hundred sixty-sixty-two. And then it shows the rear lot, two hundred thirty-four fifteen, which is almost five. And then it shows the three lots on top of that page, being one by each, one hundred.
Now, are we proposing development of the rear lot?
At this point, uh, this time, we should have identified that the proposed available is on the front lot. There's a small lot A, a lot on the back, this lot B, and at this time, there is no specific development proposed for that.
Does it make sense to retain residential development on this South Park Street?
Yes, South Park, um, central is already, uh, two hundred thirty-first page, which is G zero zero zero. And the third top is the tax back. And you can see those are all, those narrow passing are already on the whole side. Except that on the bottom third, then, most of the back part there is a rush.
Now, this is the whole six, Mr. Matt.
Yes.
And the whole six you're developing is a whole string of housing. And the, um, structures that we're proposing on, um, South Park are all implied with the whole six requirement.
Yes.
And essentially, we're talking about three-story buildings with four off-street parking spaces, um, three little parks on the left, fours. Uh, the whole association of the parking is a little bit, despite the spacing between all structures.
That's correct.
And that includes showing certain person.
Interestingly, the whole six, the parking for the parks is in one corner, or you're applying to.
Now, with regards to needs of personal, since that's the most, um, structure, this is the most of your new structure in itself.
Our second ticket, which is G zero zero one, shows the one lot A, shows the seven, uh, twelve thousand seven hundred forty. Four hundred and fifty fours per feet. So one story building, so it's tall. The whole six requirement is that it be two stories minimum, or, or so it's maximum. Well, this is one story, but it's eighteen feet tall, so essentially it's a two-story building.
That's an interesting part of whole six is that we have various, because we don't have two stories and only one story, correct? Uh, and one story is not permitted in that stuff. Um, now, but essentially, because if you look from the whole six, really, if you look at First Street, notice the whole six, which is the old parking paddles, first of all, and the bottom two buildings there. And the three stories tall that are all adjacent to each other, and then it goes up to the front parking lot. So that's where the whole six requirement is done, is walking into the, when one goes over there, it's like a new building, it's a match. Play out of the old. So hopefully, the biggest site for this is. Now, with regards to the structure being proposed, that's easily a national three zero one, commercial ten or two commercial ten, is that correct?
Yes.
Just how you live with the lot.
Correct.
Um, now, we're providing thirty-four off-street parking spaces, is that correct?
That's right.
Uh, and that these requirements on whole six, some, you know.
Well, correct, the whole six, uh, is not, uh, like, you know, like, your.
Please go ahead and say we need a parking space?
Yes.
Now, um, there are some problems in the planner report for truck access. Can you tell me what the vision is, is this a way, is it a line to allow the driver to reduce order to allow the trucks to come on the site?
Well, it's for trucks to drive directly back to rear of the site and access above the area. On the sheet G zero zero one, there is a rear of the building. On its, on its right side, there is a rear, it's a power shed, it's a company head. And then there's access to building there. If a larger truck were to come on the site, the front parking area, in the back, one road car is a pack of the other road cars. There's forty feet between those backs of those cars. So a truck pulling in from there, pull over into parking area, or even running away in lane. And then back into the driveway to come, back to the company head and back.
And in fact, as I just, I'm sort of, I'm always going to finish on this, that in the planners report, um, when we turn the frameworks and we can have the engineer show the truck guy who's on there, that's typically the plan by side of the site. So we'll have the, in the side of George's backside, he can hit, was, was truck turned or required truck or raised, is all the law. But they, the plans were considered, uh.
Yes, that was a nice point, right.
All right. Now, um, with regard to trash and, uh, as I said, is the consideration you do for that replacement of work of trash and recycle?
The bar garden G zero zero one shows a company pan to the rear, tanker on the roof also shown to the rear. So that's what, uh, what is kind of the function of the company pan in there.
Now, can you guys place one on the site?
I can leave, so this place is becoming a building, a building there, and now it's saying, we do not have a problem with that.
And talk about the signage, uh, the signage that is, uh, break about, what is the.
Signage on the front of the faces, third area. Uh, and what was requesting, this is, uh, the new signage has sign of eighty, eighty percent of the, the quantity of the product. But it doesn't change, uh, from the, uh, this is a difficult, initially, super. Same that we have throughout this day. Signage, a little bit bigger than it's what you would have, uh, we would have, uh, have, um, you know, for a sign type of, uh, thing. And if you look at it on the elevation of the door, it's a twenty proportion of the building. And then it's been twenty minutes, it's not, it's too small.
And in fact, you build in the second, you, you brought on the next. So is that the signs and the tricks on the table?
No, and it's really facing the third, you know, away from residential, is that correct?
You're also proposing a small five lot site?
Yes, a new three three, this is quite a lot. So that, for instance, a front of the door, it's in the cage, so the second sheet is the wall, the end, whatever.
And it's a minus sign?
Yes.
Now, with regards to the uses in the name of the long Third Street, on either side of this site, would it be commercial, other commercial blocks?
It is.
A common consistent commercial, and two, I can't tell, it's north, south, I guess it would be.
Well, the main issue is more right, is residential, which was just approved here for about three months.
So no one instructions would be to front, leaving the residential. And it's very sad, this is the next piece, you know?
It is, yes, you've got a third street, you know, same for the, the major, uh, retail, the American, the wrong side of the, of, 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 most of the major.
And the whole six, uh, no, because the third, we're giving commercial to the whole six.
The whole six has a new merger, retail on first of the lot, and second, third of the lot. Which is a way to really, uh, be technical, that's the way that it, uh, the discipline is.
That would not be feasible here, this.
No, this is, might be a difficult site, because it's, it's, well, that's why I don't refer to these, it's essentially deep. So you really could have built that far narrow pan and, uh, on this property in the back, do one, two, three, four, three, nine.
And from a planning point, uh, it's, it would make the out of it to be focusing on perhaps grocery store or this type of activity. the grocery store or this type of activity?
Yeah, I think neighborhood, supermarket, neighborhood, it's a, it was one little down the First Street, which opened up last many months ago, that they were sort of that neighborhood, you know, not local, but this neighborhood, but I think, I think, uh, neighborhood, two, I think, the, it's supposed to have the, 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 why, why, why this is, uh?
Uh, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, any questions, witnesses, question, new names?
I have a question, um, for the architect, Mr. Merritt, by my experience, according to going down to the worst and drive on the turnpike side, that most of the ends of those streets, like Franklin Marshall, and so on and so forth, up against the turnpike there, some sort of utility easement, is that correct?
Um.
Where the, where, on the turnpike, let's say, there's a horse, on the turnpike side, where it's all grass, is there like a pipeline or something that's out there down there?
Uh, there's, there are drains, as you said, along from the turnpike, but of course, some opposite stuff, not on, believe it or not, not on this side here, I, I know this for a fact, that it was involved in the project, but not on this side, I guess it's on the other side.
Really? Uh, the reason why I was asking was, and I guess now this is a question to you, Mr. Angel, this easement that we're looking at here, exists as a permanent easement that will go with the property?
Kind of, of, of.
And the reason why I'm asking, what say, in the future, Mr. Garcia decides to sell this property, and there is needed access for whatever reason, even if there's nothing built back here?
Easement exists in perpetuity, uh, however, yeah, it exists in perpetuity.
Perfect.
That's really, this project would stand unless there was going to be a term of easement.
Perfect, thank you.
Do you have other questions?
I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Page six of ten. I think I know the answer, but I have another question. Why a manor structure, why those manor plans? Why not bring a mason or something, that would make the building look nicer, and the neighborhood look nicer?
And the developer testing purpose about, kind of watered look, and so, uh, on the front, um, he, he does show split face block on the, on the, on the face, but they go down the sides, uh, so it's a little bit of a pass, and if we wanted to turn some of the basery partially out of the side, um, I think he might.
I remember a few years ago, I was a member of New York City Public Administration, uh, and we approved the construction of the South of the, of the South of the, uh, you remember the Congress, you want to, that the South, uh, I personally, it was against, me and another member of the sports authority, but that's what the governor wanted, I, I knew, I, I immediately made the transition, because of the, and, uh, I understand what the, I don't have any favor of this application, but, you know, I have an issue when I have free applications, and, that, that do not contribute to, to improve the ceiling or the, I mean, I'm sure you agree with me, you don't have to, here, because of course, the work is having, but, having just looking at bases obtained, that huge long structure in there, why not something halfway over? Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Oh, I, I don't think that, um, I think it could have a good-looking metal building, um, I don't think just making it out of brick or masonry will ever set makes it, so whatever we do on the side of the building, I think we should vary the look, so we have to bring some scale to it, I don't think there's wrong with it, and, and I'll concur that we should improve the aesthetics of it, it's that it's monotonous, it's, it's, it's hundreds of feet of the same thing, so whether it's metal or, or, or block, there should be some variations, some texture to it.
I agree with you.
Some changing color, so, 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 when we submit the final orders, we'll work on those elevations to improve it.
I have a question, just to expand on that, Mr. Merritt, if we're looking at the front of the building, I'm looking at sheet three of five of the, uh, tech ton group, uh? Obviously, on the right-hand side of the building is a parking lot, so we'd be able to see the entire length of the building, but on the left-hand side of the building, is it also open all the way through? Be, well, let me rephrase that, I'm driving down Third Street and look at the left-hand side of the building, is it fully visible?
Well, there's, there's a, another project that was approved here, uh.
This board approved a three, a three-story?
Yeah, which is, yeah, from here back, so it runs here back, and then there's parking behind the structure, they, they have buildings on our left.
So, what's this building, you build if you're driving down Third Street, will you be able to see?
No, it's, it's, you, you, you.
You've approved another building right here, if you don't recall, but about a year ago, it was approved, the structure, it was commercial on the first floor, with apartments on the second floor, and it runs pretty close to the front.
The front is going to be set up, where it winds up at this one, and then, and it's, it's hopes that, like.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm with you, I'm all monotonous looking, you know, one piece of, very, I'm just saying.
This building would block this.
Yeah, that's how you sense your screen, so, what's, we, so we really need to work on, which.
How do we make the right side of the base, the normal thing, and the top, I mean, how do we make this look more, less monotonous, more harmonious, and nice?
Why, you, you.
We have a, we charge for the benefits, they, uh, they, they, uh.
Yeah, I think the, uh, the developer should agree, that the better looking building is to his benefit.
So, do you want us to, Mr. Garcia?
Oh, yeah, well, we, you know, we can advise the elevations, and well, please implement areas, we submit the files, we submit the final elevations.
At that time.
Would you bring the elevations to?
They'll, they'll be submitted to the board, they'll go to Gallagher, we can leave Mr. Gallagher out, and show it to them, and have he share.
Morning, twenty-four, thirty.
This is planned area, I was asking for that.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Um, I have a couple of issues, I, you touched on this, I'm still not comfortable about this, these trucks coming in and backing in some air or something, how's the truck going to get out of this thing?
Mr. Merritt, right back.
Yeah, you look at the engineer, actually, show the engineer charges.
Okay.
Our schedule, we're pushing, parking spaces on that end.
All right. Well, I think, you know, the, 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 actually, engineer, the diarite, which will provide.
Okay, I feel that, that. This, uh, this sign you have here, I'm saying, this that is going to be eliminated, you have more specifics on that, is it going to be like a, 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 a?
Oh.
That's setting, setting, installation stuff, the line, you were just, uh, uh.
It's not good, it's a, uh, yeah, it's right on the street, so we don't want to get, we don't see, uh, uh.
I just want to, as well, but, uh, you had really touched on landscape, and we will somehow, uh, here, uh, maybe, I don't know, sure, that, uh, that's, uh, um, they
Architect, that, that, this, this, for, 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 uh, five, um, he shows two kind of, uh, straight trees in front, and then maybe some, and then the back, and separate, uh, properties, and then on the commercial property, he showed a huge tree trees of all, as well as some low, uh, uh. Actually, we put, uh, uh.
That would be, uh.
So, be, from the, from the, on the left side of the front parking lot, we, we roll the, the.
Our, our, uh.
Well, for now, see, you have, I'm sure it's, uh, which, which, raise a question to have to, 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 uh, they will assume they take this property for, so, all the road meetings are, that.
So, I had any other questions, commissioners? I know this is, uh, 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 there's none?
Questions, speak for yourself.
Okay, then we'll go with word, but are there any members of the audience, who can speak for this application, please, from Paul, see none, of the word possession, if you want to.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, Casper.
I, I think it's a great application, and I say, uh, if you believe about it, I would support, therefore, the application.
Commissioners, any other comments?
Sure.
Commissioner, every minute.
After seeing this lot for years, 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 collecting dirt and weeds, it's a pleasure to see somebody coming into the city, making some sort of a development, making it work for him, and if this person is going to rent it out, I am very much in favor of this application.
Thank you, Commissioner, for this.
This is Chairman, I share, Mr. Dunne's comments, uh, this, uh, lot is signed up for nine store for many years, and this is certainly not only an improvement, but a source for gongs and commercial, uh, here, I'm very much.
I, I agree with you.
Especially with the comments that Mr. Casper made to enhance the building.
All right, with that said, I can motion to approve nine saturation.
Motion to approve this, I'm prepared for.
My question to Casper, second? Second by Commissioner Silva, now the second is the whole.
Commissioner, you have a?
Aye.
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 Aye, Commissioner, eighty.
Uh.
Chairman, Casper.
Aye. Is there any, this is important, none, I have a question for you, most of my questions so, the second? Second, of course, the second by, uh, eighty, full favor, uh, eighty, thirty, thank you